Board members, um, is this on?
Uh, she's visiting grandkids.
I knew that.
I'm gonna do her on Monday, her and Kalinda, I think Dr. Peterson and Mr. Cousin on Monday.
Okay, are we good? Yep, okay, great. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone, uh, to the public hearing on our, uh, the St. Tammany Parish School Board budget. Uh, before we get started, uh, would you please call the roll, Ms. Coakley?
Mr. Green.
Here.
Ms. Hanson.
Ms. Rutherford.
Ms. Fauntleroy.
Mr. Harold.
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Moore.
Dr. Peterson.
Ms. Baker.
Ms. McCollum.
Ms. Laney.
Ms. Hurstis.
Mr. Bro.
Mr. Cousin.
Ms. Rafino Gallagher.
And Ms. Gallagher will lead our invocation and pledges.
Dear Father, let us come here today to do the best we can in making sure that our faculty, students, and staff get the things that they need in our budget, and we continue to pray that our school year continues to go seamlessly for all those in our system. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Um, I'll make a few comments. Uh, I have a little piece written here. Um, tonight, we're pleased to present our budgets for fiscal year twenty-five, 2025 through 2026. Our budgets are reviewed each year by our external auditors, Laporte CPA and Business Advisors during the course of our annual financial statement audit. During this audit, the budgets for the school board are reviewed for content, presentation, and for compliance with all requirements of the Louisiana Local Government Budget Act. The Local Government Budget Act, found in Louisiana Revised Statutes thirty-nine colon thirteen oh one dash thirteen fifteen, directs political subdivisions of the state as to the manner in which the budgets of the political subdivision shall be adopted, implemented, and amended. The school board strives to be transparent, and this detailed budget is presented to reflect this. The school board has received no audit findings related to the budget. The school board is also required to submit its budgets annually to the Louisiana Department of Education for approval, and the school board has received no findings on the budget from the Louisiana Department of Education. And so, uh, tonight, we are here, um, to hear public comments. This is a public hearing on our budgets. Um, and so, board members, we are, uh, here to listen in this hearing. For the most part, we'll have our opportunity to ask questions on the budget in, in, uh, future meetings. Uh, this is a chance for the public to, to voice their opinions and ask questions. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jabbia and Ms. Prevost to, uh, have some comments and can answer questions as well.
Thank you so much. Board members, President Green and members of the public, uh, thank you all for being here and thank you for tuning in at home. As Mr. Green said, remember that this, uh, is not for the board to ask questions this time. That will take place at September's committee as a whole and for the, uh, September board meeting. This is for the opportunity for the public to ask questions of the staff, of any clarifications they might need to make. Uh, and again, in September, the board will be asked to, to place a vote on the budget. I want to begin by saying how proud I am to share this year's budget. It reflects a lot of careful planning and strong commitment to our students, our staff, and our community. The most important news about this budget is that every line is balanced. That shows that we are physically responsible in keeping our finances strong. Uh, we invest in, in our people. Uh, we have invested in our teachers and our support staff this year. Our teachers, again, received a pay raise this year of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for all certified employees and for all of our support, one thousand seven hundred and fifty. We also provide every student in the district with free meals. Well, we dedicated one point six million dollars of our funding to make that possible. Our employees will also have an extra stipend this fall, thanks to the surplus from this past year. Those monies will be directly given back to the hands of the people that serve our children every day, and Ms. Prevost will provide us with a, with an accurate number in, in the recent, in the near future, uh, that will, that will show the exact amount of money that every employee will receive in a stipend this fall. Uh, we are also making smart choices with our future, with one point five million dollars, providing, uh, equipment for our students, for our faculties to use. Also, classroom technology of one point one million dollars for training and all the resources that are needed to develop our teaching force every year. On top of that, we expect to get one point one million dollars back in FEMA reimbursements to cover our past COVID expenses that we're still waiting on to be sent back to us, but that should be coming very soon. All this shows that we are responsible, we're transparent, and we're focused on what matters most, supporting our students, learning, and supporting our staff who make that all possible. A huge thank you to Ms. Terry Prevost, our CFO, and our finance team, and all the central office, uh, board members. As you know, I have tasked the people sitting in this room with making cuts to our budget, with taking a hard look at staffing and resources, and doing everything we can to provide the budget that we're able to bring to you and to provide our employees with every bit of resources that we can give to them. So I appreciate everyone allowing us, board members, staff. I appreciate you guys all coming together so that we can work together, uh, to make St. Tammany Parish the great place it is to learn and to grow. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Green, if you'd like to ask for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jabbia. Um, we don't really have a sign-in sheet. I see Mr. Osborne and Mr. Broome in the audience, and so, uh, maybe you guys want to flip a coin. Uh, but I'll let Mr. Broome, how about you, sir? You were here first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board for this opportunity to discuss the budget. My name is Robert Broome, uh, from Slidell, and I do appreciate the chance to go through this budget. As the superintendent pointed out, it's a conservative budget that has a lot of details. Um, it's very transparent, and I can't claim it's easy to understand. It's certainly understandable, and, um, it generated a lot of questions. So I think, uh, I hope you forgive me if I take a few minutes or more than a few minutes to go through this budget and ask questions. Of course, some answers may be not readily available, but we'll get what we can do. But I appreciate it. What I'm going to do is going to refer to the general fund budget first, and I'm just going to go through page by page, asking my questions, and we'll, we'll get as far as we can. Let's see, this is that. And some of these questions might be somewhat detailed, but I think you'll, it'll be educational for the public to hear the answers. On page one, the budget summary, there's a comment about special programs, and it's, I don't really understand what special programs refer to. If perhaps the administration can give us a couple of examples of what special programs are?
I can answer that. Um, if you go to page six, there's a detailed breakdown of what special programs are. Um, for our school district is going to be our English as a Second Language ESL and pre-K. That's the bulk of the expenditures in special funds. So it's salaries, benefits, travel, materials and supplies for those, um, areas.
Thank you. And other expenditures, there's community services. What was the one million dollars for and why, and there's a large drop, change in that line item. What is community services?
Yeah, community services is made up of two things. Um, in the prior years, that's where we, um, recorded our before and after care expenditures. Um, we also have, um, a payment we made to the LSU agricultural program in there that's thirty-two thousand. That payment remains, but the other, um, after and before care expenses were moved to a project that is considered a local grant. Um, it's a project, it'll show up in our grant budget when I present that. Um, we moved those items there just to count for them more clearly by school, so we could see, make sure the schools were making money, were covering their costs, and then any profit that's left over by school is returned to the school. So we just pulled it out of the general fund and recorded it in another special fund.
Thank you. On page one, the committed, the line item on the fund balance summary, committed to bond rating disasters. There's a, a huge jump from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six million dollars, um, where was, where we had budgeted, um, and then we budgeted eighty-three, and anyway, could you explain why the big change there and what is involved in that line item?
Yes, in years prior, twenty-four and prior, there was an amount that was dedicated by the board many years ago that was for bond rating. Um, that amount was, I believe, twenty-six million. Let me flip to that page. Twenty-six million. So in July of two thousand twenty-four, I brought a new, um, fund balance policy to the board where I recommended that we commit two months of average expenditures, um, for bond rating plus for disaster recovery. So the calculation, that is two months, the increase is the, um, two months of, um, average budgeted expenditures plus transfers.
So.
So that'll be adjusted each year based on what the, the monthly budget average is.
Okay, so basically, the principle of having a reserve is still there. It's just a more conservative.
Protects it in a greater amount.
Okay. On page two, uh, utilities, um, I frankly was surprised to see the, um, we showed, it's listed as a percentage of the total budget of two nine, two point one nine percent, but it's a, a thirty percent increase from twenty-three, twenty-four. Is there some, is that, what caused the huge increase?
Yes, um, in twenty-four, we had a small deficit. Um, we, um, moved utilities and telephone expense to our community disaster fund to balance the budget. So they were recorded in another fund. Um, for this year, we started the year thinking we would need, um, the money, the utilities and the telephone to be budgeted in the community disaster loan, but, um, thankfully, we ended in the black, so I moved those back to general fund, freeing up that money in the community disaster loan for future issues. So that's the full amount of utilities. That's the actual cost of utilities for the district. It just wasn't recorded a hundred percent in general fund for twenty-four because we were in deficit.
Thank you. Hopefully, I'll remember that answer when that issue comes up later, so I won't repeat it.
Hopefully it won't. It won't happen again.
Right. Um, let's see. Building repair, um, we dropped from seven point four to five point five million. Um, was that because twenty-three, twenty-four was unusually high or?
Yes. Um, we had incredible, um, AC repairs and issues in twenty-three, twenty-four, plus we had an extreme year of inflationary costs. Um, so it's somewhat leveled off this year, and then we didn't have all the AC work that we had in the previous year, so we were able to save some money. Plus, um, in the building area, our building insurance, we were able to drop that down a million dollars.
Okay. Perhaps that's the same answer for the next question. It's construction in twenty-three, twenty-four was four point eight, now it's two. Is that the same?
No, that's different. Um, that, the construction relates to transfers to construction roofing and parish-wide construction. Um, we did not fund, uh, construction roofing in twenty-five, and we're not funding it in twenty-six. We're going to use the fund balance to, um, cover expenditures, um, hopefully one more year. And parish-wide, as we discussed when we passed the food service free meals, we agreed to reduce that transfer from three million to two million. So that's the difference between twenty-four and twenty-six.
Ah, thank you. Um, also on page two, there's the workman's compensation. That was a substantial drop, so congratulations. But I'm not quite sure whether this workman's comp, are these payments to somebody or they're premiums? Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, that's part of it. We're, um, self-funded for workers' compensation. So what happens is for every payroll check, each employee pays in a percentage, not from, not them personally, but we pay it on their behalf into the workers' comp fund. Um, those premiums are set by an actuary, so it's a percentage of their check. It varies depending if you're maintenance, food service, a bus driver, clerical, the, the rates are different. So we fund that workers' comp fund that way, and then out of that workers' comp fund, we play claims, we pay an insurance premium, administrative costs, whatever the cost may be for that fund. Um, and the drop was four hundred and forty-six, three fifty-one when compared to actual for twenty-five. So it's a twenty-one point four nine percent drop.
Still, congratulations. That's a substantial drop. It's always good to see when our costs go down.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. Davis, thank you. Telephone postage and advertising in twenty-three, twenty-four was two hundred and sixty K, and now it's four hundred K. That's a, a large jump. Is there some particular reason?
That's the same as the utilities. Some of the telephone was recorded in the community disaster loan to help balance the budget, and it was put back in general fund.
Thank you.
For twenty-five and twenty-six.
Great. Let's see. On page three, there's some discussions of recovery of indirect costs through interfund transfers. Went from four point five million to one point eight million, just a large swing. Perhaps you can explain what's going on there?
Um, in twenty-four, we had full ESSER funding going on, the pandemic funding, and for every dollar we spent, we received reimbursement, of course, but we also received an indirect cost reimbursement. So of course, that year, we had high indirect cost reimbursements. Um, that, that, um, program, the ESSER fund was, um, completed in September of twenty-four, I believe it was. So we only had a small amount of indirect cost on that program for fiscal twenty-five, and so for twenty-six, we'll have none of that. So it's just the, the, um, normal indirect cost that we were getting pre-COVID, uh, or pre-ESSER money, which is going to be your title, um, sped money, and some, some other federal funds we get an indirect cost in reimbursement on.
So the large.
So about the one point eight is what it should be.
Got it. So that was just a, an ESSER, an effective ESSER.
Correct.
I have questions on the interest and unrealized gains or loss in investments on this page three. Um, could you explain what unrealized gain on investments are and how it differs from interest?
Um, we invest in treasury bills mainly, so their market value is different than what we actually paid for them. So we're required by governmental accounting standards to record the actual market value, and in our case, that market value's been higher than what we paid for it, so we have to book that as an unrealized gain.
Okay, which makes it a different line item than interest.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you very much. All right. On page four, um, billets for preschool teachers, um, there was a, a significant change in the number of paras while there was an increase in teacher billets. Um, reducing the paras, I know, would save money, but how does it impact the classroom?
Okay, we don't have any pre-K paras in the general fund budget, so I think you're talking about SWE paras?
I guess, yes, I am. Yes, you're right.
Yes, so, um, I believe I researched that for you. Um, so for SWE paras, there were cuts to some paras, that's true, but these cuts were to the one-on-one paras. So when the SWE student that they were one-on-one with graduated, that para was not replaced, but the paras for entire classrooms were not impacted. So this is just the one-on-one paras. We were able to reduce those.
Okay. Okay, there is, there are line items for preschool classroom teachers and preschool classroom paras. Um, the last two, you know, four lines up from the bottom.
Yes, I understand, but there's nothing budgeted for twenty-five or twenty-six. We were able to record all that in state funding. Um, the only reason we've usually had, um, funding for pre-K teachers and the aides for pre-K in general fund is when the grant doesn't cover a hundred percent of the salaries and benefits. But the last two, well, we're jacking for twenty-six, and twenty-five, it did cover all the salaries and benefits of those two, um, teachers and aides. Twenty-three, twenty-four, it did not. So it's a portion of their salaries.
Got it. Thank you. That's, clarifies that. Let's see. Let's skip over that question. I'd like to. Let's see, guess. There is a lot of detail in these budgets, so it's, it's easy to get stuck in the weeds. I don't want to take too much time here. What is the tax collection, pension fund fees? Okay, I, yes, let's clarify that. Um, I now understand it, but I'd like to get it explained for the public. Uh, pension on page eight, there's pension funds, fees, tax collection. Um, do you explain that to the, for us?
By Louisiana law, um, property taxes collected by each parish, um, by the, particularly by the tax collector, which in our case is the sheriff's office, are required to take a deduction from all the entities' property tax revenues, and that deduction is for pension plans. So a percentage goes into each state retirement pension plan. It's set by law, and they just take it from each payment they make to us, and they remit it to the different pension plans.
Right.
So we record the expense.
So it's, it's money that we're, we're taxing the public for.
We're helping to fund those state retirements, as are all governments that get property tax.
Yeah. Just another way the state does it to us. Got it.
Well, they also pay into teachers and school employees, so it does benefit us.
It's, it's. May not be totally transparent to the taxpayer, but ultimately, it is money that we have, expenses that we have incurred as a state. Okay, I'm curious, I, about, on page nine, referring to more, partly as an example, the salaries for the billets or the salaries, the number of assistant principals, um, under expenditures. In twenty-twenty-five, we had eighty-seven, um, actual assistant principals employed. We're budgeting for ninety-two. Could you explain why, why we have, we're, seems like an assistant principal should be a fixed number. I don't understand why that's changing.
I believe they added some parish wides, um, which that varies. That could vary in any year. If they need one in X, a school, for whatever reason, that, that can vary. And there may have possibly been vacancies in that eighty-seven number, um, because as, when I do this budget, the numbers are moving, um, constantly, so that's a possibility. So, um, but that's not a big swing.
No, it's not.
But, um, how many parish wide did you add?
It's a very good question.
Two or three, I think. Two or three.
Yes, and, and we were using two parish wides to actually get through a couple of schools because we didn't name permanent principals with the late changes with Mr. Favre stepping down or retiring at Slaughaw High, uh, and the changes we had to make there. We used our pool of, uh, parish wides to fill those vacancies. So that's the, the discrepancy in different numbers there.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
No problem.
On page, on page ten, upkeep of grounds maintenance, um, let's see. It's, it's not a huge number, but is that, what does that involve? Is it contracts outs for outside support or supplies or?
It's going to be supplies. It's going to be lawn maintenance mainly, um, that our maintenance department, Dale Roark, handles that. They buy lawn mowers. They buy, lawn mowers would be in the equipment line, but they buy, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's fertilizer, all the things related to the actual land. Um, the state makes us break that out from actual buildings, so that's why there's a separate line.
Okay, and that would be, does the, does each school get a budget for their lawn maintenance or their property maintenance? Is this on top of that?
I'm sure there's an allocation of some sort. We don't book that way, um, but I'm sure.
It's part of their operational.
Yeah.
It's part of their operational funds.
Okay, so this is, this is on top of what a school would pay?
This is what maintenance is handling. The schools do have their own, um, that they do their own maintenance as well.
Schools are not responsible for buying lawn mowers, weedirs, those kind of things. Maintenance helps supply those things, uh, and fund those things. We're just in charge of keeping up our grounds and whatever disposables that we need to do those things.
It's probably tree removal, um, dirt, things like that. We, we have a lot of that go on.
Thank you. Let's see. Salaries, regular. Trying to find, trying to find my own question here. Oh, I'm on the wrong page. That's why I can't find it. One thing that caught my eye was under salaries for regular ad bus drivers. The number of employees jumps, but the budgeted amount decreases. Um, that seems like the dollars went the opposite way. Is that?
It's a possibility because we had a lot of long-term bus drivers that, um, that retired.
That makes sense.
So the new ones come in at the lower rate of pay.
Okay.
So that's not unusual.
Okay.
And we may have had some vacancies, too, that are not accounted for in there. That's a possibility.
Thank you. Um. Next question is the maintenance serv, on page twelve, maintenance services for information technology. Um, we seem to be consistently spending about one point two to one point five. We're budgeting two point eight again. Um, that's a hundred percent increase. Is there something coming up or is that just being careful?
We, we plan, IT is too important so that we always have a pad in that budget because we don't know what's going to come up. Um, we've just been lucky. Uh, Mr. Bullion is, um, very good at keeping his costs down. So, but we always like, we better be planning because that's going to happen to occur quickly. When that does, you need that budget there because we can't buy things quickly on a PO or anything else unless there's a budget there. So it just protects us, and it gives us a little pad in the budget. I mean, it is a budget. You want your actual to be under, but that's the reason for that, because we, we could have emergency purchases on a weekend, and you, you cannot with our system unless there's a budget there. You can't do a large expenditure.
Got it. So this is, this is to make sure we keep everything up and running. Okay. Again, also on page twelve, the community services operations, um, it says it's moved to the, you know, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a million dollars, and now we have thirty-two thousand. I think you already explained that.
I answered that earlier. Yes. It moved to another fund.
Got it. Thank you. Almost done with the general fund, anyway. Page thirteen, um, what is the supplemental course allocation fund, and what tuitions are we paying? Is this for, tuitions for faculty training or students or what?
Yes, um, the supplemental course allocation is an. Yes, the supplemental course allocation is an allocation we receive as part of our MFP. We used to account for it in general fund, but last year I moved it to a separate fund because we tend to get the allocations at the end of the year and we couldn't spend it all and it was rolling into general fund fund balance. So I set it up on its own. So the transfer that goes to that is the amount per the MFP. And then that money is used to pay tuition for both academic and CTE dual enrollment college coursework. Let's see, Ms. Langwell gave me some answers. We currently pay 12 hours of academic DE credit for all students in addition to the CTE DE courses. It's used to pay tuition to SCA-approved providers, post-secondary and Operation Spark. That's the bulk of it.
Okay, so I could summarize that, say that it's mostly tuitions for students.
Correct.
Got it.
And there's a separate fund for it in the special budgets.
Thank you. Another question on this that just I picked up at the end is, what is the limited tax revenue sinking fund? And why did it receive so much more transfer than the budget? It's just, could you explain that?
We, we got, we received a, we did a note for Chromebooks last year late and I'd already done the budget. You have to transfer the principal and interest payments on that. It's called a limited tax revenue bond. So we have one for Chromebooks that was $5 million and we're also paying on a Capital One Limited Revenue Bond that we used to buy buses with years ago.
Years ago.
So that fund accounts for the principal and interest payments and we make transfers from general fund.
Okay, so that is both.
Right, so that's the, that's an annual amount, yes.
Yeah, I remembered the buses, but I couldn't remember the Chromebooks. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Those are a lot of, a lot of questions. But I think it's, it's important for the public to understand. But the general fund is only part of what we spend. So there's a whole bunch of special funds that also need to be reviewed. So under, this is the budgets for special revenue capital and debt service. Starting with the food service, school food service. Not so much a question, but a comment that I would ask for clarification if I'm incorrect in this. But I understand that school launch funding is a concern to the board. But I would point out that if I understand the budget correctly, over 92% of the budget for food service comes from state and federal funding. And of the 8% that is funded from local taxes, most of that, if not all of it, has been dedicated in the local taxes. If I appreciate my memory and what the budget says, is that correct?
Partially, but we fund a lot more than we're required to fund. Particularly for the, what we give in MFP, I think we're required to give about 150,000 and we gave 6.9 million.
Okay, so.
So we're, yes.
Coming from the fed, the state, it's still more than the state requires.
Yes, it's a lot more, but we have a premier food service program compared to most districts, so it makes a difference. And we're providing free meals for kids.
Okay, that makes sense. But I certainly do think it's, it's a worthwhile expenditure. I think I solved my own question there. The next question I've got is the BP oil spill settlement fund. I'm happy to see that this fund is being carefully used for a good purpose. The board dedicated this money for school security, which I think is a wonderful way to spend this money. But we now have a school security fund intended for all school security services. In my opinion, and perhaps you guys can offer a comment, rather than paying expenses directly, safety expenses directly out of the BP oil settlement fund, perhaps it would be better to do a fund transfer so that all the expenses for security is under the security fund.
You clearly can't. The security fund, you're talking about the SROs and MHPs? That's, that's funded by a dedicated tax, so that can't be commingled. This is reported separately because it is now a committed fund for safety and security, so it has to be reported separately.
Okay, so when we say that it's, okay, so that the school security funds, it's for all security, school security services, but that's a dedicated tax now.
Only MHPs and only SROs. And that tax that we receive funds about half of that cost and the general fund funds the rest. So we have to keep that separate.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Makes sense. All right, so it brings up the question on the school security fund. We transfer, the transfer in from general fund is the mandated tax revenue that we received.
No, no, the mandated tax is the first line that shows taxes 1.76 mils.
Right.
That's the, that's what we receive based on what the voters approved.
Got it.
And then below that is the transfer in for the general fund's portion. We always knew that we would have to pay a portion of it that the millage would not cover the entire cost.
Okay. We're, we're showing a, I think it's true. We're showing some increase in the expected fund balance, right, from 1.2 to 1.7 million. That's a 36% increase in the expected fund balance. Is that, anyways, since we're funding it from the general fund, do we expect a 36% increase? Why is the increase in the?
Because the property taxes, when we reassessed, the property tax went up for that fund. So we were able to keep the general fund contribution at the same amount. But I will tell you, SRO cost is projected to go up a substantial amount because we're negotiating contracts right now, so that number may not even cover. I did go high, but I'm not sure what that number's going to be.
Got it.
Because they're all, they, of course, they do pay raises and they want us to help fund those raises.
Sure.
Rightly so.
Yes. They're providing the services.
Absolutely.
All right. Fortunately, I got absolutely no questions on this long salary reserve fund, so that's good. That's, I'm sure that that's a detail. My next question has to do with the camera purchase fund, which is, I think, page 17. Sorry, I couldn't get these questions to, to the administration ahead of time, but. In the camera purchase fund, page 17, in the last two years, our expenditures have been at or under $100,000, less than $100,000 each year. But we're still funding or budgeting over $400,000 a year, expecting this. Are we expecting planned expense or?
Yes, yes, I believe we're, we're planning on buying some, some security cameras for SUI. Louis can probably answer that better than I.
Yeah.
That's a grant from the state and actually there was a change in the law that's going to require us to expand our SUI camera installation. So we are preparing for that right now.
Oh, okay. When you say it's a grant from the state, will the, will the 400K be funded by the state or is that?
We've already received it. We received about 600, I'm trying to remember from memory, about 600,000 in 20, go back to my cover sheet. In 23, we received a substantial payment for cameras themselves. And then we received, last year we received a payments for maintenance, so I set that up in a separate fund. And they could give us another allocation. The maintenance one was a surprise last year, so we, I don't really know at this point. But they're not going to give us $400,000, but we have the funds there to, to do 400,000 if that's what it takes. That's an estimate.
Thank you.
Page 17.
Page 17 of the special funds, the cameras.
He's on the purchase, camera purchase fund.
Good news is you already answered some of the roofing questions, so that's done. Something having to do with the, the bond construction funds. This would be page 21 and 22. Maybe perfectly normal, but it's just something I don't understand. There's a, there seems to be a consistent under run in the amount of money that we're actually spending versus the budget. Is that just because the bills haven't come in or?
No.
The contract's actually coming in less or what?
It's very hard, first of all, we're not required to do budgets on capital projects. We do it.
I understand.
Just, just because, basically. And so it's always, it's better to go high, again, the same as with the IT budget, because when that budget's not there and the bills come in, it's a major undertaking to change the budget. We have to go to the superintendent. So we go high and it doesn't really matter because the capital project funds, the state doesn't even care about. We're not required to budget them, so they're basically just a hold to track our expenses.
Okay, so.
Our goal is to try to spend the, on the page 21, that's 2013 bond construction fund. Hopefully that money will be spent for 26. IT is using that money. And for 19, for the page 22, that's the remainder of the 2019 bond issue. And there will be a plan for that at some point for what's left.
Fair enough. Okay.
And then the new ones, the new ones are there.
Yeah, the new ones.
Yeah, well, C40, that's the limited revenue bonds I referred to. That's the Chromebooks. And then the new one is, I budgeted that.
Yeah, they, I'd forgotten about the Chromebooks. Okay. I think I'm almost done. Page 25 on the parish wide construction fund. For, for the public, please explain what lands have been bought and what lands have been sold for the, for the public. There's lands sold and lands purchased here.
We sold land last year. It was.
Lake Shore Village.
Lake Shore Village, it was sold and put into parish wide. That's the 1.6 million you can see in the 24, 25 projected actual column. As far as I know, that's the last land I can remember being sold for a very long time. And then land purchase, we did none last year. We had some in the year before and I believe that was transportation possibly, the big part of it, maybe the 2.6.
Transportation and part of Wood, part of Wood Lake Elementary.
Yes, you've got a better memory than me.
Correct.
That's correct. But we, and we don't have any land budgeted, but that could come up. That's a possibility. When land comes up, we try to purchase it if we can use it.
Makes sense. All right. You already, so that, that's that and that's that. There's a typo in there, but you'll catch that. And you already explained the limited tax revenue sinking funds. That's the page 27, so I think I did it. Thank you very much. I appreciate the detail of these budgets. It gives the public a chance to follow along and see where the money's being spent and make, and gives everyone a comfortable feeling that while a lot is being done, at least it's all being documented and shown to the public. So I appreciate the hard work for the administration and the board on following all these budget line items. Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Broome, for your homework and thoroughness. And I was just sitting here thinking, you know, in my line of work, I get a lot of questions that eventually I can answer most of them and then I say, I have to get back to you on that, but not with Terry. She, she knows that budget and she knows. And, and on that, I want to, I want to say this because Mr. Broome reminded me after my first year, first term, first budget hearing. And I had sent a lot of my, my questions and actually sat down with Terry for like an hour. And we went through the budget. She knew it like the back of her hand. But Mr. Broome reminded me after that meeting, when I didn't speak up and ask questions, he says, hey, look, there are people out there in the audience, there are taxpayers that, that would ask this question and would want answers that don't have access. And so I would just have the board members keep in mind that, you know, there's some things that are obvious that, that Terry can answer on the phone or some, in a meeting. But some of these questions, a lot of the taxpayers want to know. So, you know, keep those in your back pocket for September 4th and, and, but I, again, I appreciate your questions very thorough and appreciate your advice early on in my term that, that there are other people watching and listening that might have interest in, in our questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Mr. Osborne?
I'm just a sub in case he didn't show up.
Would anybody else in the public like to comment, have questions on the budget? See none? So the next item on our agenda is announcements by president. And I, I made some up here, but get your safe school training done. And then our next meeting will be the committee as a whole meeting on Thursday, September 4th.
And there's a expulsion appeal hearing at four before the committee as a whole meeting.
Okay. And so with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.